The microphone on. Thank you. Welcome to the regular meeting of council for Monday, February thirteenth. If we could rise for the national anthem. Municipality of Central Algon acknowledges that is located on the land of the McKee Treaty. That was signed by the WainDOT and the Anishapi Nations, including ancestors of the Chippewas of the Chippewas of the Thames First Nation. It is also the traditional territory of the Pottensani, Atawandronk, and Mississauga Nation. These first nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of the land and waters in the municipality of Central Algon. I ask if anyone has a disclosure of peculiar interest and the general nature thereof. Council? Thank you. Adoption of the minutes. If I could have a mover, councillor Halpin and a seconder, councillor Connor.
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by councillor Connors, that the minutes of the special meeting of council dated Tuesday, January the seventeenth, and the regular meeting of council dated Wednesday, January the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three be adopted.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Now, it looks like we have a delegation this evening. Port Stanley Parking Study, Mr. Paul Bumstead from Dillon Consulting will be in, will be here to present Port Stanley's parking study.
Good evening, your worship and distinguished council members. Can I confirm that you're able to hear me clearly?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, thank you for allowing me to, uh, for this opportunity to speak with you tonight on the topic of Dillon Consulting's recently completed Port Stanley project. I'm going to share with you, I hope. Are you able to see a presentation slide deck at this point?
Yes.
And it is just the, just the slide itself, no other extraneous information or just the slides. Excellent.
Correct.
Great. Well, thank you again. Through this presentation material tonight, I plan to provide an overview of the study purpose and approach to the work. A description of the existing and future conditions, parking conditions, and identify the opportunities and strategies for enhancing the management of parking demand in the study area. Uh, the focus of the study was to collect parking data and identify specific problems related to parking activity in the village harborfront and beachfront areas, including the west end of Edith Cavell Boulevard. The scope of work included tasks that quantify the existing parking supply and parking demand, and consider the impacts of future growth, as well as assess the efficiency of the current parking management strategy. The study was initiated in May of two thousand and twenty-two, so to establish demand during the busy summer weekend periods. An online parking survey was undertaken between May eleventh and May twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, the study or the survey was advertised during the master plan consultation and on the municipality's website. A parking utilization and traffic data collection exercise was undertaken Saturday, July ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, which looked at the occupancy for municipal parking lots, paid on-street spaces, and local on-street parking activity. Existing parking demands were then extrapolated to a future condition to account for growth in the local activity and municipal activity. And using this information, short-term and long-term opportunities and strategies were considered to address the identified problem. So with regard to existing conditions, the May two thousand and twenty-two online survey was used to solicit feedback on the characteristics, the how, where, when, and why of users accessing parking in the study area. The issues they prioritize, so the what, and the markets that users come from, the who. Field data was collected on Saturday, July ninth, in order to assess peak time period demand, that's summer weekend condition. And the day chosen for the survey was a hot sunny day, and as such, it was a very busy day at the beach and in the town itself. The online survey, uh, provides very high-level feedback on specific activities, uh, in, in the study area. Approximately one thousand, twelve hundred and fifty, uh, visit, people visited the online, uh, engagement tool, of which eight hundred and thirty-three provided input to the survey questions. And those questions, very quickly, were how satisfied are you with the parking experience? How often do you drive and park in the area? Where do you typically park? Why do you visit the village? Uh, do you have the option to use alternative modes? And a request for postal codes so that we could generally identify the market from which the person resides. And that we offered an opportunity to provide any additional feedback. Key takeaways, uh, from, from the survey, respondents represent a wide area, uh, but ninety pot, ninety percent come from local areas. So that's London, St. Thomas, and the adjacent county. Most respondents who are not residents visit Port Stanley one to five times per week for shopping, dining, and recreational purposes. Concerns most frequently, uh, noted related to the pay parking implementation, the need for resident passes, and an inadequate parking supply particularly for visitors. The general feeling relayed was that parking supply and management of that supply, both on lot and on street, needs to be improved. With regard to the municipal lots and on-street, the parking utilization data was collected, uh, for municipal parking lots, on-street parking, uh, both, uh, in formal, uh, spaces, uh, along roadside, as well as on the local streets. The total inventory for parking supply is eleven hundred and ninety parking spaces, of which one thousand and fifty-four are provided in municipal lots and one hundred and thirty-six are formal on-street spaces. In addition to those formal municipal parking areas, there's a capacity for one hundred and twenty-six vehicles on local streets in the area, as well as a hundred and fifty-five spaces provided in private lot in the main beach area. The graphic on display here shows the peak occupancy during the peak hours of the day surveyed, so the Saturday of the, uh, summer weekend, where the red reflects lots that are at one hundred percent capacity or occupancy or more. Yellow are lots where, uh, the capacity or occupancy is eighty to ninety-nine percent, which is functionally the capacity of the lot. And then green lots, uh, represent eighty percent, uh, less than eighty percent occupancy. Now, these lots included the East Pier, the Boat Trailer, and Little Beach Lots. It should be noted that the Little Beach Lot was at the cusp of eighty percent, so, um, functionally, it was at capacity. It's also important to note the municipal pay structure and the parking revenue generated by that pay, pay, uh, implementation. The paid off-street parking is in effect between ten AM and five PM daily, weekends and weekdays, between May first and October first. The parking rate is four dollars per hour with a twenty-dollar daily maximum. And the revenue data here for two thousand and twenty-two shows the lots generate approximately six hundred thousand, uh, last year. With respect to future conditions, a significant amount of growth is anticipated for the secondary plan area. Uh, some specific developments include the East Pier and the Dominion of Canada sites. Parking supply for these new developments, uh, is to be provided as part of the site plan requirements. However, growth in adjacent areas, uh, in the market, uh, will result in increased tourism and recreation activity at the beach. This growth is expected to mean in the order of a twenty-five percent increase in parking demands in the long term. The study team undertook a, what's called a SWOT analysis, a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats description. In terms of strengths, uh, in parking, the busiest area, Main Beach, is well-served by municipal parking. Uh, there's a wide range of user friend, excuse me, user-friendly payment options uh, for visitors. Parking bylaws are clear with regard to on-street parking limits and paid-for-use locations, and the municipality is enforcing restrictions and identifying serious violations. In terms of weaknesses, the beach area parking lots operate at capacity limits during high-season weekends. Obviously, that's dependent on weather. The local roads are overloaded with overflow parking demands during peak conditions, and parking area layouts, as they are today, are informal and can lead to inefficient use and circulation. So, uh, on those lots without paving and lines, uh, we do sort of see less efficient use of space and illegal parking activity. Uh, in terms of opportunities, East Pier is an underused facility and has significant parking supply available in the short term. Candidate locations or additional lots do exist within walking distance of the busy Main Beach area. And there are opportunities to expand the beach parking, uh, the main beach parking, and travel demand management strategies, which means auto reduction, uh, using more, uh, cycling and walking modes, can be leveraged to manage parking demand. The threats to the success of any strategy, uh, future development plans will result in additional local activity, so uh, there's additional, uh, pressures on the system coming. There's no room to accommodate growth in visitor parking activity. Future development plans for existing private parking areas, uh, so that's potentially additional parking restrictions, additional enforcement, redevelopment, and then future plans for local roads, uh, whether or not, uh, parking restrictions will be considered there. In terms of the future conditions and the utilization, area demand from parking or parking is expected to grow to one thousand two hundred and ninety vehicles, that exceeds today's municipal, uh, provisions, and compares to one thousand three hundred and thirty-four total spaces today. So that would mean ninety-seven percent occupancy. These demands will strain parking supply and can manifest themselves in the network as operational issue, as visitors hunt for spaces parked illegally on local streets and exist, and in existing lot aisles. The future outcomes, if no action is taken in the long term, can result in issues related to parking circulation, roadway operations, pedestrian safety, uh, and decline in overall user experience. In terms of strategies, uh, we have three buckets really to look at. There's a do-nothing or status quo approach. There is a, an approach where we increase the efficiency of the available parking, and then, of course, there's increased parking supply. In terms of the do-nothing, the parking get condition today is at its full potential, with the exception of East Pier. Lots and streets have very little residual capacity. The ability to ma- maintain the status quo strategy is dependent on how quickly local and area growth occurs. Residual capacity, when that growth occurs, will be used up quickly, resulting in significant increases in traffic congestion and illegal parking. And the do-nothing, you know, it can be considered an interim compromise, but over the long term, it's not sustainable. In terms of increasing efficiency, uh, we can look at formalizing lot design. That means improving the efficiency of each lot, uh, effectively increasing the supply through, uh, paving, formal space delineation, improving the efficiency of the payment process and how queues for people, uh, during busy times when they're lining up to pay, how that, that occurs, keeping pedestrians out of aisleways, et cetera. Minimize the potential for illegal parked vehicles and maximize the efficiency and safety for circulating vehicles and pedestrians. Then we have three travel demand management potentials. The mode shift, which is a moving away from personal auto, that would mean providing more transit to the area uh, for longer-distance trips so that people are arriving, uh, via mode other than personal vehicle. And to do, to achieve that, uh, obviously, you need to work with, uh, cities, St. Thomas and London, uh, on the feasibility and viability of such a, such a service. The others, uh, there's a travel demand wayfinding. That means manage personal auto uh, as it uses the system, providing signage at key decision, uh, making locations coming into the village in the beach area, uh, providing guidance to specific areas, uh, and changeable message signs that can provide occupancy status at key lots to assist visitors in understanding whether there is parking available. There is some wayfinding in town today, primarily for, uh, pedestrians finding their way to specific locations. Uh, but the idea would be to sort of manage demand at specific lots through advanced signage, uh, in, uh, preemptive locations. And then there's the opportunity to possibly look at transit shuttle connections, uh, between the East Pier and West Pier through the village, with, with stops, with the thought being, uh, manage parking demand where you have it and move people through the system on a specific shuttle or, or transit experience. And then there's the increased supply approach. Uh, there are opportunities to provide the required, uh, parking stalls, spaces at new locations. Uh, some of them have been investigated previously, uh, including the Erie Rest Beach location. Erie Beach today has a parking deficiency, uh, which can result in some congestion and illegal parking along Edith Cavell. Uh, its effectiveness, effectiveness as Main Beach parking overflow is limited because of the walk distance of approximately a kilometer, but the attractiveness of using it, uh, as a specific destination, uh, provides, um, an opportunity. Uh, this may result in additional traffic issues on Betholamue and Valley Street, and obviously impacts of construction implementation to the local beach area. Another opportunity is the Karla North, which is a speculative site, uh, north of Bridge Street on the west side of Karla. Uh, there is property available, uh, within one kilometer, uh, reach of the Main Beach Lot. Uh, this may be more effective, uh, with another shuttle connection on, including it in whatever shuttle service may or may not be considered in the future. Uh, in any case, improvements will be needed to Karla in terms of street design, access lanes, and providing pedestrian and, uh, cycling amenities, uh, sidewalk, multi-use path to connect to the village and to the beach area. And then, of course, there's the Main Beach, uh, expansion, which would assist in providing long-term, uh, whether it's making use of private landowner, which is currently a private landowner, taking some of that lot and converting, uh, which doesn't really increase the supply of parking, because that parking is being used today. Uh, but it would provide, uh, more management control of the parking areas, uh, by the municipality. And then there's also the site, uh, near Lotus Lane and west of William, or east of William, uh, which could be used to expand, uh, parking spaces and provide additional parking. So in summary, the key findings, uh, related to the study, status quo, uh, the problems identified are for the busiest times, weekends of the summer. So it's important to note that. It only represents a dozen or so days over the year, but it is busy. It does, it does, uh, reflect a, an efficiency and safety issue at specific times, peak times during those days. And the do-nothing strategy will result in present-day conditions for a few years. However, in the long term, it's not sustainable. Conditions will continue to deteriorate as activity increases. Short-term action, uh, would be to look at improving wayfinding and information signage to make best use of the East Pier location, uh, and improve non-auto service provisions, pedicycling and transit connections, such that we can get into the, the village and the beach area without having to park directly there. Pricing strategies could also be used, uh, in the short term to direct man, demand to specific lots. That would be a, sort of making East Pier a cheaper lot than, say, the Main Beach area, but people choose to pay a premium, uh, for parking, uh, at the Main Beach. In the long term, uh, an increase in inventory will be required at some point, uh, and TDM, TDM initiatives to complement that, such that, you know, the inventory, uh, both within the area and external to the inventory, uh, the inventory can be, uh, provided in terms of connectivity outside of the Main Beach area. So that concludes my presentation. Uh, thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bumstead. Councillor Morgan, sorry, councillor Halpin to start, and any other councillors.
Thank you, Mayor Sloan. Um, thank you so much for your presentation. Uh, I would like to ask you about dynamic parking in our downtown. Um, I've been reading some of the work by Dr. Shoup on infrastructure and parking, and something that he remarks on repeatedly is that in places where you can't widen the roads and you don't have a reasonable way to add inventory, dynamic parking pricing can be a good way to control both the traffic and the parking. And I did see that you remark about our downtown, that we've got free parking with a two-hour limit, and that that two-hour limit is having the desired effect of, uh, keeping us below capacity in those spots, which is good. But I do also see that we have a lot of businesses remarking that the two-hour limit is affecting businesses like restaurants and things that need to be more than two hours. So I was wondering if you could speak to how dynamic pricing would potentially work in those places?
Sure. Uh, as I stated in one of the last slides, uh, pricing strategies can be a very effective tool for, uh, it's both carrot and stick at the same time, that, uh, if you're, if you're looking to make use of underused areas, you can make them, uh, give them a price advantage. Uh, so if it's, you know, twenty dollars for the day at the Main Beach area, you can either make that more expensive or make it less expensive to park at East Pier. Likewise, for, uh, parking on-street, it's, you know, the, the two-hour parking, um, is, is great at, like, getting the turnover. If you're looking for it to be, uh, you know, more of a, if it's go, if part, if users are parking there for a specific uh, uh, activity, if it's, it's dining and they want to, and then they want to do something else. Uh, if it's dining, they only want to be there for, for an hour. You can make, you know, the first hour, you know, less, less, less expensive than staying there for two or three, uh, hours. Uh, so yes, dynamic parking, you know, in the, in the Main Beach area would be good for diverting traffic or parking to more peripheral lots. In terms of turnover, uh, in the downtown, if you're looking to, for more turnover, uh, shorter, shorter parking stays, uh, if it's an hour for lunch, an hour for meal, or whatever that is, and you can add pricing to that. Uh, and if you want it to be longer, then you're just, you can just extend your, it can have pay parking, but extend the time periods that you're allowed to park there. So it is, it is an effective, effective way of managing sort of people's expectations and, and having them make their own choices about what they value, whether they value the proximity or whether they value the money.
Thank you.
Absolutely, councillor Albert.
Thanks. Then I'm going to ask another one as well. Um, cash in lieu of parking, it is something that is discussed here. And again, we're in a situation where uh, we have limited ability to expand our own lots. We do have some ability, but it is limited. And cash in lieu allows developers to, uh, well, to pay. So in a way, it's a sort of a larger-scale dynamic parking. Um, do you feel like our current cash in lieu amounts are reflective of our degree of need, or is that something that we would need to examine to make sure that we are taking enough revenue in by that, that we can be putting it into things like shuttles that help us to relieve this?
Yeah, I would defer to staff, um, on the effectiveness or the specific policies in play and how, how they're received. Uh, but, you know, I understand that there is a cash in lieu component now. Uh, offering cash in lieu of providing parking can generate, uh, both revenue, but also, uh, leave, leave shorts in the parking requirements. So it's a trade-off between the supply and the revenue generated. So, and I, I, I'm sorry, I don't know exactly how that's working for you at this point. But I imagine staff could respond to that.
Thank you.
Councillor Bachmann. Uh, thanks very much. Um, I'm looking at your, your overall plan and the numbers and, um, understanding we are going to approach a, a critical position if we're not already there. Um, the one thing that, I guess, concerns me in the back of my mind is the, um, accessibility parking in the, in the downtown specifically, especially where it comes to the areas of the theater and pharmacies and stuff like that. Um, I've just personally noticed that they're very limited, but if we're going to expand our parking, uh, how much accessibility are we going to allow?
Yeah, through, through you, Mr. Chair, the, uh, yeah, the, the, this, this comes down to the formal, um, designation of parking areas. The parking on Lotus Lane, uh, is identified as accessible parking. Uh, the parking at the Main Beach area along the, uh, the, uh, facilities building, uh, is designated as, uh, accessible. But yes, as, as we expand and formalize the parking areas, we have to be cognizant of the need to continue to meet uh, policies and standards regarding, uh, accessible parking spaces. And that also includes, um, you know, if, if we're looking at strategies for, you know, making use of, um, sort of peripheral parking areas, uh, to the Main Beach, uh, in the short term, or, or adding some kind of, uh, connection via transit or shuttle or, or active modes, uh, the areas and the design of the areas, uh, need to be inclusive. Uh, that, you know, the, the active transportation facilities are available and amenities are available, uh, for that, uh, for accessible, uh, spaces, uh, for the different physical challenges, uh, that both, I mean, drop-off areas, um, parking areas are all well, well-defined, have good access, uh, and are planned for in the, the sort of formal design and allocation of the lots.
Mr. Bumstead, I have a question. Page thirty-one, the previous council approved and allocated funding for the construction of a new parking lot with a capacity of seventy spaces. This project was canceled by the existing council due to local resident opposition. Um, I don't think it was canceled by this council. It must have been canceled by the, canceled by the last one, was it?
Um, yeah, yeah, I think, I, I think that, that, excuse me. Um, yeah, I think this, this report is, is the sort of August, August.
Okay, thanks. Um, and I'm looking forward to getting some more understanding of that, but I had a question about, uh, the Main Beach parking lot. You, you mentioned that if it was paved, it would have fewer spaces. Is that, is that correct? And if so, why?
No, no, well, um, if it were paved and delineated, I think you'd be able to, um, we haven't done the exercise of mapping it out. Uh, formalizing the aisles and formalizing the parking spaces is usually, makes Uh, formalizing the aisles and formalizing the parking spaces is usually makes more efficient use of the space. So, you know, you have standard gaps between vehicles rather than some people taking up more space than others. Uh, you don't get parking at the end of aisles. So um, it's, it's. Have to map it out and, and design it properly, but A, it would be more efficient. You, you'd get more parking on, on a speci- on an area basis. But you might lose some of the end of aisle parking area, the width of the aisle would be standardized. So there is a potential, it's kind of a plus and minus. Um, I, I think the status quo and or more could be achieved. The efficiency would be improved and the safety would be improved. Uh, but you may, you may lose a, a parking space here and there.
Thanks for the clarification. And just on that, if we look at the one, the ballpark, which is, is across from the main beach. Um, which is used, you know, two and a half months a year and the rest of the time doesn't have anything on it or anyone parking there. Is there any way possible to make it more efficient without paving it? Ie, are there things that can be done to the current, to the current lot as an overflow? Um, that we could do for, you know, without having to pave the whole thing because paving for me is um. Not just paving paradise, putting up a parking lot, but also a, a use of land that we only really need for ten or eleven weeks. And I just wondered for efficiency sake, if there's anything that could be done there to help with the overflow. Thank you.
Uh, I, well, I think, I think there are things that could be done. Um. The, I mean, there are this, this sort of sleeping concrete uh partitions between uh aisle, aisleways. Uh, that's important. So it, it, it relates to the delineation of space. So it doesn't have to be paved. Paved, paved makes it easier to formalize. Uh, but I'm sure there are other uh sort of less, less permanent things that can be done. To provide better delineation of aisle, better delineation of aisle ends. Uh, better delineation of pedestrian uh space. So um, there, there are some, there are some less uh permanent things that can be done to uh. Delineate more clearly how parking is expected to occur on, on that property.
Great, thank you. Uh, Counselor Graham and then Mr. Perrin.
There we go. Um. I think that uh the, for losing spots, usually what happens is, in my understanding, Mr. Perrin can probably chime in on this if I'm incorrect. But when you delineate spots, you have to use the biggest vehicle possible. So instead of, you'd have to use the truck, right? Instead of having two or three cars. So it takes away some of those spaces. I'm just wondering uh two things. One, uh, did you, when we were doing the parking study for, for uh future parking supply? Did you take into consideration the two parking lots or one large parking lot that's north of the boat launch parking lot? And or the, I believe we own where Casware is as well, um, and some parking there.
So, uh, the, there are two lots, we look, or three lots really. There's the boat launch and the adjacent parking space uh on the west pier. Then there's a vacant piece of property that's currently uh sealed off. And then there's the visitor center parking. My understanding is that there are development plans in terms of the Dominion Development Building Development. Uh, that.
Sorry, could you just, could you just speak up? I just can't hear you clearly.
Sorry. Uh, so on, on the, on that section of roadway where we have uh the boat launch. And the west pier parking area. And then we have a vacant property. And then we have the uh visitor center uh location. The vacant property, my understanding is that that is slated for future development, including the Dominion Building. The Dominion Building will include some, some parking, I think in the order of twenty five parking spaces. Uh, but it was not included as an opportunity for uh future parking beyond.
And sorry, just because of the Harborfront Master Plan, is that where you're referring to? Or that it's not suitable for parking for other reasons?
No, because of the proposed development on that, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Perrin.
Uh, through you, uh, Mr. Mayor. So one of the, the uh questions about the informal um delineation of parking spots. So when you look at our existing parking lots now, um, Mr. Bumstead is absolutely correct. It's, it's difficult to lay out parking stalls where people uh know where to park. Um, but informally, the cedar posts that are there are spaced appropriately for a three meter wide parking space. So uh the municipal, sorry, the Port Stanley zoning by law requires parking spaces to be uh ten feet by twenty feet. So that's how those spaces have been delineated, uh both in main beach as well as uh in the ballpark parking lot. Uh, so uh municipal staff have gone through the exercise of laying out the property boundaries. Um, and then trying to determine the best uh utilization of that space. Based on uh ten foot by twenty foot uh parking stalls that conform to the zoning by law. And adequate uh driveway aisles to be able to access those. That all being said, uh, when you have those in place and there's no parking signs at end of aisles and those types of things. Um, to try to make efficient use of the property, it just takes one or two people that don't park between the cedar posts. And, you know, same as wa- same as in a, you know, asphalt parking lot with parking stalls where someone wants to protect their vehicle. And parks over the line and takes more space, then it can quickly compound into less efficient use of the parking spaces.
Thank you. Counselors, any other questions? Deputy Mayor Noble.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Bumstead, the um downtown core. What is your best advice as far as timing and cost for promoting the businesses in that area?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, sorry, can you repeat the question? I'm not sure what it, in, in terms of parking. Or the best advice in terms of parking to maximize exposure for businesses? Is that the question or?
Yeah, to promote the businesses, like what, what would be the best for promoting the businesses as far as what we would, what we would charge? And then also timing, because I think some of the, some of the on-street parking is like two hours and that kind of thing. Do you have advice on that?
Well, I think the, 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 the parking as it's laid out in the, in the downtown area is, is good. Uh, the turnover was good. Um, it, it comes down to the individual businesses. Um, I'm, I'm sure individual businesses would prefer that their, their, their customers didn't pay for parking on-street. Um, I'm sure that they would prefer that their customers get to park as long as they want in front of their business. Um, for some businesses, for other businesses, it would be, we want people moving on. We don't want people parking there for, for, for two hours, three hours. Um, so it is, it is difficult. I, I, I think the, the best, the best solution or the best. Way to make it efficient and uh is, is the wayfinding, is the information signage about. Where parking, where parking is and what, where the uh specific. Uh destinations are. So, you know, if you're, you're looking for restaurants, here's, here's a good, here's a good parking lot for the restaurants. It's only a, you know, you're in behind the uh, the uh, the restaurant and the, the police office and the pharmacy. The pharmacy parking lot. Um, I think, I think sometimes uh visitors are just not aware. They don't like to get off the beaten, uh, off, off the main track. Uh, they'll, they'll hunt for the space on the roadway. Uh, so providing them full information both on where to park, what the expected rates are, even, even if that's coming into town. Um, you know, on-street, you know, that some, some kind of pay rate. Um, advisement so that, you know, you know what you're, what you're looking at when you get into the, the downtown area. Uh, so I, I think it's, it's information. Um, it can be on website, it can be on signage, uh it can be on dynamic sign, signage. Uh, I think that's probably, the, the, the parking layout in the town is, is, is good. The, the amount of parking is good. Um, so, uh, I think it just goes to manag- managing how, how people see it and how people use it.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Bumstead. Counselor Graham.
Uh, just to respond to um Deputy Mayor's question. I spoke to most of the businesses, the residents. Um, had a meeting with the gardeners, the Kiwanis, Optimist Library. Theater, and I'm missing one, Port Stanley Village Association and one other group. Um, and all of them advised that the downtown parking situation is not beneficial for them or helping them. Two hours is not adequate enough for people to go to the theater, people that work. Down there and they are looking for parking or shopping for that period of time. Um, so, in follow-up to that, um, I would like to make a motion that we return the pharmacy and the Legion Lot to unpaid parking. That the duration on Main and Bridge Street increased to three hours. And that Hetty Street and Colonel Boswick Street return to non-durational parking.
Thank you. Um. First, before we hear the motion, should I ask if there's any other questions for Mr. Bumstead? And we can, we can, we can sign off on that if that's fair with everyone. Mr. Bumstead, thank you very much for your presentation. It was thorough, it was interesting and uh our thanks to you. Uh, look forward to discussions in the future. Thank you.
Very much.
What's my protocol? Do I go to the mover and the second or do we go to the motion now?
Yeah, the motion to return the pharmacy and Legion Lot to unpaid park. Sure, sure, if you want to. Got some of my notes.
I'll give it back.
Okay.
Ms. Wilson.
Through you, Mayor Sloan, to Counselor Graham, return to non-durational program. I'm not sure what, if, if that direction will be clear to st- to staff.
Sorry, non-durational parking.
Thank you. I do have the movers. Counselor Graham, do you want me to read this as draft?
Sure, I can ask for a second. Please read as a draft.
The draft reads that Council direct the pharmacy parking lot and the Legion parking lot to be returned to unpaid parking. And that the duration on Main Street and Bridge Street increased to three hours. And that Hetty Street and Colonel Boswick Street return to non-durational parking.
So we have a mover. Do we have a second or? Deputy Mayor Noble.
Also, just a point of clarification. So, uh, I believe the resolution reads the Legion Parking Lot. That I understand that correctly.
Ms. Wilson.
That's correct from Counselor Graham's notes. Visitor Center, sorry.
Counselor Graham.
Sounds good.
Question. Um, I've got some comments and questions here. Um, first of all, um, the Counselor Halpin.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Sloan. Um, I'm concerned that, uh, though I have raised in the past my objection to us deliberately. Adding things to our council meetings that weren't there when there was time to do so. And it might have been small things that were not going to change a great deal. This would be a huge undertaking and a huge change to our revenue. This would be a huge change to our budget. And I think that for us to make this decision on the fly, without the public having had any advance notice of it. And without us having appropriately studied the potential impacts of it would be very inappropriate.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin. Any other counselors have any questions? Counselor Connors.
Through you, Mayor Sloan. Michelle, has there been any um businesses that have, are able to validate parking at all down there? I don't know how we would do it, but eh, eh, but can they validate parking for people, for customers?
We don't have that system set up, but what they're saying is that um, the amount of time that it takes. There is a high turnover, but that's the point, is that we're losing um business down there. That's why some of them have to close. They have to have minimal hours. They can't, their staff isn't able to use it, including the theater and the library. Um, so there's no validation process that would be, that would extend the amount of time that they're allowed to have those parking spots.
Forfeits, but then when you look at what the uh, what the Legion does for the community, I, I. I, I think this is a benefit to, to forfeit that amount of money.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Noble. Counselor Connors.
Through you, Mayor Sloan. Uh, Deputy Mayor, was, were those annual numbers or monthly numbers or, are you sure? Annual?
Counselor, uh, sorry, Counselor Graham.
Uh, so that, this was Counselor Connors, this was the first year that they just implemented. It's only been one year and that was. The original amount for the entire year.
Um, Counselor Bachman and then Mr. Perrin, please.
Um, I don't wanna seem to revisit this all the time, but um, is there a certain minimum number of accessibility lots that we have? And once again, I'm, I'm referring to the, the downtown with the theaters. Uh, I personally know people that have issues with that. It'd be blockers and canes and stuff like that. And that is generally used by a, a population of, of our seniors. And same for the Legion is, I don't know if there's a, a certain percentage of lots we have to uh put away. But I'd even suggest increasing the limit just for those people to have that ability.
Thank you, Counselor Bachman. Mr. Perrin, please.
Uh, so I have a number of questions here that I'll try to address. So first, uh, let me start by saying that uh paid parking uh machines did not get rolled out. Until um, the second week of June of, of twenty twenty-two. And that was uh due to delivery issues of the new parking machines. Typically, paid parking commences May first of, of the year. So uh, that is the first thing that I would, would note. Uh, secondly.
Uh, secondly, uh, on the, uh, we'll say the Pharmacy Center Parking Lot Downtown. Uh, Council. Took a change of tact with respect to the implementation of paid parking after it was rolled out. And I believe that was done at the end of June, first part of July whereby paid parking was only, uh, implemented. For, uh. Part of the, part of the work, uh, part of the week. And paid parking was in place for Saturdays, Sundays and Mondays. And I believe Friday, uh, so the, the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays were, were free parking in that, in that parking lot. The, um, with respect to the number of accessible parking spots. In the pharmacy parking lot. I believe there are four at the, at the west end of that parking lot and then another two at the east end. On a percentage wise, it's, that's less than 10%. Uh, approximately around probably seven or eight percent of those parking spots would be accessible. Out of that parking lot at the Visitor Center Parking Lot, I believe there's, uh, four accessible parking spots in that area as well. Every other parking lot, uh, Main Beach has accessible spots as well as, uh. There are accessible spots also at the, at the West Pier.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin. Uh, Deputy Mayor Noble.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Perrin, I'm just, I've been approached to, to see if there's an opportunity to create, um. Accessible parking spots at the slip docks. Uh, and maybe we can visit that at another time, but I just wanted to kind of put that out there so everybody knew about it. Because it was a concern brought to me.
Yep, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, absolutely. Uh, we can do that. Uh, sorry, I, I negated to answer the, the one question with respect to revenue. That Mr. Counselor Connors had. So Medical Center Parking Lot, uh, for the time period that I referenced earlier and given the fact that. The days where paid parking was in effect. Uh, for 2022 was $12,258. Uh, the Medical Center and at the Visitor Center Parking Lot was $18,687. So if you add them up, it's a potential loss revenue of, uh. Approximately $39,000.
Thirty thousand, wouldn't it be twelve and eighteen, Mr. Perrin? Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Halpin, you had a question?
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. Um, I would like to point out that although I agree that the Legion is of benefit to our community. I think that this really is not the time and place to discuss this because we have not had enough background. Or enough public input and we could by that same argument say having a beach is of value to our community because it brings everyone to all of our businesses. And that employs people here and that creates opportunity in our community. But if we were then to say, well, then all of the beach parking should also be free. There comes a point where we are creating a cascading precedent, because we have not taken the time to actually examine this. I don't believe that this is appropriate to be doing right here and now without having had this in our report.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Halpin. Counselor Graham.
Uh, so just in speaking to. Um, all the, uh, businesses. Um, all the service groups, all those different people. They're continuing to say that it, it's detrimentally affecting them and that's why we're moving forward with this. That's why I brought this. That's why I brought the delegation originally. When everyone, um, did have the opportunity. To do that when originally the previous council was here. And I don't want to go through another season or at any point, uh, that we're going to continue to be detrimentally affected for our businesses, restaurants. The theater, the library, all the service clubs, not even being able to have their volunteers come downtown to help out. So I think that we need to decide this so that we can. Move forward and, and kind of correct that situation and help our businesses and our service clubs as much as possible right now in this time.
Thank you, Counselor Graham. Counselor Halpin, please.
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. Uh, we do have an obligation not only to the people in Port Stanley. But to the whole of the Central Elgin Community. And there are costs in operating Port Stanley and the point of public parking having a cost. Was that it was supposed to help us to cover some of those tourist costs. And if we are to make that change and suddenly we do not have that revenue. That comes from the taxes paid by all of our stakeholders, not just by those in Port Stanley. So it's not fair for us to say that only the opinions of those that have businesses or homes in Port Stanley are of effect here.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin. Council. Any other comments? Mr. Perrin, did you have anything further to add? Thank you.
Nothing further.
So procedurally, you have a motion on the floor right now, Counselor Graham and Deputy Mayor Noble. With their approval, I have, uh, removed the term Legion and inserted Visitor Center. And again, uh, it reads that Council direct the pharmacy parking lot and the Visitor Center Parking Lot to return to unpaid parking. And that the duration on Main Street and Bridge Street increased to three hours. And that Hetty Street and Colonel Boswick Street return to non-durational parking. And that the motion be forwarded to the County of Elgin for their consideration as Bridge Street is a county road.
All those in favor?
I rise to a point of order.
Counselor Halpin, please.
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. Our procedural bylaws say that we have an obligation in section two point two point one. To ensure that decision making is understood by the public and all stakeholders. And that we have provided access to information and opportunities for input. I don't believe that we've accomplished that and I think that we're in defiance of that.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin. Mr. Shipway, any comments on that? Just gonna ask for counsel one moment, please. Uh, thank you. I appreciate your patience and getting some good counsel here. I'm going to call the original motion in order. And ask for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thanks for your understanding. Um, we still need a mover and a seconder for the report that Mr. Bumstead put forward. If I could get a mover, Counselor Bachman and a seconder. Counselor, oh, Deputy Mayor Noble.
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that report AMDSO 723. Report Stanley Harbor Secondary Plan Area and Edith Cavell Boulevard Master Parking Study Report be received for information. And that future upgrades acquisitions identified in the study be referred to the 2024 budget deliberations.
All those in favor? Carried. Moving on to correspondence. Our first item, the mum, the mum link polar bear dip fundraising in pink. This is from, uh, Deputy Mayor Noble. Did you have any comments?
Uh, I think the, the polar dip is, is, uh, the goal for it is to raise awareness and, um. And celebrate some of the, some of the victories that this group has had. And ideally make it a, an event that goes forward for, for years to come. There, uh, there's, um, certain criteria that they have to meet and they're aware of that criteria.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Noble. Um, if I could get a mover. Counselor Bachman and a seconder, Counselor Halpin.
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Counselor Halpin. That report CE 0323 mum link polar bear fundraising in pink, we received this information. And the council approved the special events permit for the mum link polar bear fundraising in pink to be held on March the 25th, 2023 at Little Beach. Subject to the following conditions, the organizers complying with the special events policy as adopted by council. Liability insurance be provided by the organizers of the event in the amount of $5 million. Naming the corporation of the municipality of Central Elgin as co-insured and held harmless. If ice breaking is necessary, the organizers will contact the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services. Just to discuss which measures will be taken. The final schedule and location of the event being scheduled for Saturday, March the 25th. Be from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Being, being approved by the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services. And the applicant being responsible for contacting St. John's Ambulance or a similar organization to be on site during the event.
All those in favor? Carried. And just quickly moving on here to information received for information. Um, we have a 2023 Ontario Farmland Forum. Elgin County Economic Development and Tourism, copy of their February newsletter and a copy of Heritage Central Elgin Minutes. Any discussion on that, folks? If I could get a mover. Counselor Halpin, seconder. Counselor Connors.
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Connors, that correspondence items number one through number three be received as information filed.
All those in favor? And so carried. Moving on to reports, um, first report is from Central Elgin Planning Office, CEP 63 dot two two. Do we have someone speaking to this, Mr. Shipway?
Few Mr. Mayor's staff can respond, but this is, uh, just a consent application conditions for land division.
Thank you, Mr. Shipway. Comments or questions, counsel? If I could get a mover and a seconder, please. Counselor Halpin, Counselor Watson.
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Watson. That report CEP 6322 be received as information. And that council has no objections to consent application D 10522 Glen Weaver Fisheries, Inc., 236 Colonel Boswick Street. Subject to the following recommended conditions. Approval from the Committee of Adjustment to recognize the lawful non-conforming residential use of the severed lands. The severed land be merged in title with the abutting lot to the west municipally known as 305 Hetty Street. That subsection three or five of section 50 of the Planning Act RSO 1990, as amended. Shall apply to any subsequent conveyance or transaction involving the subject lands. The solicitor for the applicant is to provide an undertaking whereby they inform the committee in writing. That the lands are being conveyed to an abutting property owner and thus a merger of title will take place. Which merger shall include all interest held inclusive or mortgagee's interest. A drainage reassessment be done if necessary at the owner's expense. And the municipality of Central Elgin be provided with a copy of the reference plan.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Um, next is from the Chief Administrative Officer. Mr. Shipway, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, as requested at the January 25th meeting. Uh, staff have put the licensing bylaw and the background on the licensing bylaw on the agenda for council consideration and direction.
Thank you. Um, couple of questions. Let me start with Counselor Halpin.
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. Um, so I was one of the people that had been interested to bring this up for discussion. And, uh, most of it seemed reasonable to me, but I did have concerns about whether there's a safety element to, um. The attendant bylaws. So in our adult entertainment parlor licensing. We have a requirement that anyone who works in these facilities needs to submit proof. Um, of their ability to work in Canada as well as a police check and photos of themselves and a list of any operating names. Um, we know that historically. That is information that, uh, could be requested by the police if warrants were issued and. That there can be a long and uncomfortable relationship between sex workers and the police. And bearing in mind that we already have a license for the operators themselves. And that we could use attestation for them to vouch that they have checked. Criminal records and that they do know that people are of the age of majority. I'm wondering what the reason is for us to collect that information as well.
Thank you for your perspective, Counselor Halpin. Mr. Shipway?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, the, the adult entertainment components of this bylaw remain unchanged from the original bylaw that was done at the time of amalgamation. So those, uh, terms and requirements have just carried forward from that time.
Thank you. Is that something then that we could look at, um, getting at least a report on whether. It continues to be of use or whether that's something that we've effectively covered with the owner operator licenses and we could strike from the bylaw?
Mr. Shipway.
And through you, Mr. Mayor, and all of those components, including the owner operator wall from that time. If council wanted to provide direction to, uh, amend or for staff to investigate and report back on any component, more than happy to do that.
Thank you. Uh, I have a quick question before you, Counselor Connor, if that's okay. So when it comes to things like the, the horse drawn carriages, which have a, an extensive list, is, is this, so, so how does it currently work? With something like Dickens Days in Port Stanley, which is, is that seen as a one-off? Do they have to go through the? Uh, the, the six approval bodies? Just wanted some clarification, please. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, the Special Events Committee has historically recommended that, uh. A special events designated by the Special Events Committee is exempt from the licensing provisions and it's, there's a specific exemption within the bylaw for that.
Understood and thank you for that clarification. Counselor Connors, please.
Through you, Mayor Sloan. Um, Mr. Shipway, was my understanding when we talked about this, uh, in our last meeting that, uh, we would have. For lack of a better word, the authority to either license or not license. And, uh, was one of the reasons, I guess, that, you know, that I was on board with this because we have the last say as council. Who gets a license, who doesn't? And therefore, you know, we can select. Is that? Is my understanding correct?
Mr. Shipway, please.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, as the licensing bylaw is currently, uh, constructed. Uh, these classifications are licensed and there's an administrative process administered by staff for licensing. Uh, that goes through. If, if, for example, council wanted to just repeal the entire bylaw, a portion pertaining to horse and carriage. That's fully within, uh, council's purview. Uh, alternatively, the bylaw would require amendments so that licensing approval, uh, is, is returned to council level versus the administrative level.
Thank you, Mr. Shipway. Counselor Connors?
Through you, Mayor Sloan. I only have one, one issue with one topic on here.
Through you, Mayor Sloan. I only have one, one issue with one topic on here, so I'd rather not see that, but that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Counselors, any more comments or questions on this? Councillor Graham?
I was, I was sorry through you, Mr. Mayor. I was under the same impression, councillor Connor, that, that it would come back to council for approval on licenses. Uh that was my understanding of it as well, so. If we need to make a motion to amend that bylaw to say that, I would put forward that motion.
Mr. Shipway.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, if licenses will be issued at the council level, the bylaw would require fairly substantial amendments to operationalize that.
If I could ask, maybe we could ask staff to look into that for another meeting, if that's okay? With your consent, council? Thank you.
Yeah, if I may, so for clarification. That staff be directed to amend the licensing bylaw for licensing to be administered by council and bring back for council consideration, is that?
That's fine.
Is that being proposed for all of the different licensing types or is there a certain one that you had in mind?
Councillor Connors, please.
I don't believe we need adult entertainment down there, so that's the one I had in, in mind that I really don't want anything to do with down there. I don't think people do either. Things like horse drawn carriages, et cetera, et cetera. I have no issue with that. So that's why when we talked about this initially, and I think councillor Watson was involved in the discussion as well. Is that we talked about it and said, as long as we get the final say as to who's getting a license and who's not, then I'm good.
Thank you, councillor Connor. Deputy Mayor Noble.
Just for clarification, are we only talking about Port Stanley and does every business in Port Stanley have a license or are we talking about Central Algon? And every business in Central Algon has a license? I was a little confused.
Mr. Shipway for clarification.
If you miss America, so the licensing bylaw applies across the entirety of Central Algon. And this licensing bylaw deals with adult entertainment parlor, uh horse drawn carriages. Port Stanley outdoor seasonal vendors, so that's beach vendors, refreshment vehicles and temporary outdoor patios. The municipality does not do any other form of licensing at this point in time.
I have a question, Mr. Shipway. What about food trucks, please?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, those are under refreshment vehicle. Apologies if I skipped over that one, but they're covered under refreshment vehicles.
Thank you, Mr. Shipway. Councillor Graham, please.
Um I think just to be fair through you, Mr. Mayor, that if we're requesting that the bylaw be written, rewritten, so that decisions come back to council. Just to be fair, it should be probably all of them, rather than just picking and choosing. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, councillor Graham. Councillor Halpin, please.
Through you, Mayor Sloan, I can see that this would add a considerable amount to. Meetings and to decision making where if there are things that we feel that staff is doing effectively right now, it seems as if we would be reinventing the wheel by asking that. They go through an entire process and then we do as well.
Thank you for your comments, councillor Halpin. Any other councillors have any questions, comments? Mr. Perrin, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So to clarify, if all the licenses are issued by council, that could actually slow down. The process as far as issuing licenses, depending on when people come in. If they miss a council meeting and we're in, for example, June. And we meet, our council meets once in July and once in August, there is a potential that their license will be held up until a future meeting of council, just so council's aware of that. Where now you have a delegated authority to staff and staff are able to turn that around quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin. Mr. Shipway, please.
Here, Mr. Mayor, so just because this would require amending of a bylaw, staff would be more comfortable if it was in the form of a resolution, so for your consideration. That report C A O five twenty-three relicensing bylaw number two seven one four be received for information. And that staff be directed to amend the licensing bylaw to assign licensing powers to the council, the corporation and municipality of Central Algon for council consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Shipway. Do I have a mover and a second or? Mover councillor Graham, second or councillor Connors? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Our next report is from the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services. Update Kettle Creek Source Protection Plan Notice of Pre-Consultation. Uh any discussion or can I get a mover in a second or please? Councillor Watson, councillor Bachman.
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Watson, seconded by councillor Bachman, that report I C S O three twenty-three. Re-updated Kettle Creek Source Protection Plan Notice of Pre-Consultation be received and the council support the proposed updates to the Kettle Creek Source Protection Plan.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Our next here after the Director of Financial Services, we have the Director of Fire Rescue Services over to the fire chief. Chief, did you want to speak on this or did you want just me to do it as information, sir?
Through you, Mayor Sloan, it's simply for information.
Thank you. If I could have any discussion before we, from council? Perfect. If I could have a mover, deputy mayor noble and a second or? Councillor Halpin.
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by deputy mayor noble, seconded by councillor Halpin, that report F S O two twenty-three. Re-January two thousand and twenty-three monthly alarm activities report be received for information.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Onto the Director of Asset Management and Development Services. First item is the January two thousand and twenty-three monthly building report. Any questions or comments? I have a quick question. It puts through what we have for the amounts and I'm gonna, didn't come right up here. It comes up for the amounts of the permits or the amounts of the value. Sorry. Apologies. Thank you. When I was reading through this, it talks about what the permits are and the permit value. But do we ever discuss how much we, we bring in as a metric from the actual permits? So we list the project value, but as for fees, is that ever listed? Mr. Perrin?
Yeah, through you, Mayor Sloan. So actually, if you go further on in the report on to page two. Uh or page three of the report, there's a fee for each one of those permits being issued. Uh we do not summarize the building permit fees in the, in the, in the summary report. The, you know, we can do that if, if council wishes. But at this point in time, no, the individual fees are on a, on a fee by. Uh project basis that are listed on the, on the attachments to the reports.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? I'm gonna need a mover and a second or councillor help and deputy mayor noble.
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by deputy mayor noble, that report A M D D S O three twenty-three re-January two thousand and twenty-three monthly building report be received for information.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. And the January two thousand and twenty-three monthly bylaw report, comments? Questions? If I get a mover, councillor Watson, second or councillor Bachman?
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Watson, seconded by councillor Bachman, that report A M D S O four twenty-three re-January two thousand and twenty-three monthly building bylaw report be received for information.
All those in favor? Carried. Moving on to the bylaws. Bylaws one, two and three. Comments or questions from council? Seeing none, if I give a mover and a second or councillor help and councillor Bachman?
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by councillor Bachman, that bylaws twenty-seven fifty-one, twenty-seven sixty-seven, sixty-four and twenty-seven sixty-five be read a first and a second time.
All those in favor? Carried. Bylaw two seven five one, two seven six four, two seven six five be read a first and a second time. Sorry.
Procedurally, we've done the first and second. Now we need a mover and second or on the third reading, so.
Still learning. I need a mover and a second here on the third one, please. Councillor Bachman and deputy mayor noble. And thank you for your patience.
Motion reads, moved by councillor Bachman, seconded by deputy mayor noble, that by twenty-seven fifty-one, twenty-seven sixty-four and twenty-seven sixty-five be read a third time and finally passed.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Moving on, public notice, notice of Public Information Centre East Side Development Area Sanitary Servicing. Other business? Anyone else have any, is there any other business? Seeing none? We will move to closed session. Can I get a mover? Councillor Bachman and a second or councillor Connors?
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Bachman, seconded by councillor Connors, that council proceed into closed session at eight twenty-three P M. In order to address a matter pertaining to advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. A position plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board. Information explicitly supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board by Canada, a province or territory or a crown agency or any of them. A proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board and the security of the property of the municipality or local board.
All those in favor? Carried. I'm gonna have a five minute, ask for a five minute recess, please. Thank you. We're coming back into open session and Ms. Wilson, do I need to, what do I need to do now? Mover and a second or to go into open session and that's deputy mayor noble and councillor Halpin.
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by deputy mayor noble, seconded by councillor Halpin, that council adjourned from closed session and returned to open session at ten twenty P M.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Motion number one, C S one, closed. Okay. Okay. Mover and a second or? Uh councillor help and councillor Connors?
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by councillor, seconded by councillor call. Excuse me, seconded by councillor Connors, that closed session item C S two re-front streets hope stabilization be received for information. And staff proceed as directed by council.
All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Number three, if I get a mover and a second or councillor Bachman, councillor Watson?
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Bachman, seconded by councillor Watson, that closed session item C S three re-shared services be received for information. And that staff proceed as directed by council.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Number four, can I get a mover and a second or? Councillor Connors, councillor Watson?
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Connors, seconded by councillor Watson, that closed session item C S four re-economic development be received for information. And that staff proceed as directed by council.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Uh number five, if I get a mover and a second or? Councillor Connors, deputy mayor noble.
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Connors, seconded by deputy mayor noble, that closed session item C S five re-report Stanley be received for information and that staff proceed as directed by council.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Number six, if I get a mover and a second or deputy mayor noble, councillor Bachman?
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by deputy mayor noble, seconded by councillor Bachman, that closed session item C S six re-King George the sixth lift bridge be received for information. And that staff proceed as directed by council.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Number seven, mover and a second or councillor Bachman, councillor Halpin?
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Bachman, seconded by councillor Halpin, that closed session item C S seven re-Don Yat Park Diamonds be received for information. And that staff proceed as directed by council.
All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Uh number. Eight, mover and a second or deputy mayor noble? Councillor Connors?
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by deputy mayor noble, seconded by councillor Connors, that closed session item C S eight re-verbal report from Mayor Sloan regarding shared services be received as information. And that staff proceed as directed by council.
All in favor? Opposed? Carried. So the last item here is the bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council. If I could get a mover and a second or councillor Halpin, councillor Watson?
First motion on the bylaw. Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by councillor Watson, that bylaw twenty-seven sixty-three be read a first and a second time?
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Second motion, I need a mover and a second or councillor help and councillor Connors?
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by councillor Connors, that bylaw twenty-seven sixty-three be read a first and a second time?
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Motion to adjourn, councillor Bachman, councillor Halpin? All those in favor?
Just read it, Mayor Sloan.
Thank you.
Moved by councillor Bachman, seconded by councillor Halpin, that the regular meeting of council dated Monday, February the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three be adjourned at ten twenty-five P M. And the next regular meeting of council be scheduled for Monday, February the twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three at seven P M.
Thank you, everyone.